And you're ready to go.
All right, thank you Vanessa. All right, it's 7:00 PM, Monday, May 10th. Meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen. All selectmen are present. Mr. Shea is present, not by video, although that's going to change apparently in 45 minutes or so, right now by telephone. And so I'll call the meeting to order and go right to the Governor's intro. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18 of Governor's March 15, 2020 order, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidance for remote participation by members of the public under parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's Southborough website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we may to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So again, welcome everybody. And just before we get on, I told people I've gotten messages flashed on my own computer a couple of times that my internet connection is weak. So if I disappear for a second, this brush show, you're in charge. And I'll get my testy iPad and tune in that way, but hopefully that won't happen. So with that, the first item is public comments. And Mr. Lit has his hand raised. Or Katie, can we bring Mr. Lit over?
Hi, Tim Lit. Well, I wish I wasn't here this evening, but I am. I'll be brief. I know you all have a busy night. I hope you all had a chance to read my email on the Board of Health budget. Numbers have changed a little bit since, but my sentiment has not. In short, I'm encouraging you to take a deep breath and reconsider your position before proceeding to micromanage and override the judgment of an independent board. I think in the printed budget, the Board of Health has adopted virtually all of your creative alternatives, and they've accepted the organizational and financial risks that go with it. I know they've considered and reconsidered the remaining issues and voted not to go further down that path. I don't think it makes sense to force town meeting to spend time arbitrating a dispute over the remaining differences. I suggest it would be in the best interest of the town for you to gracefully declare victory, support the present printed budget, and move on. That's my two cents for this evening.
All right, thank you very much. I do not see any other hands raised for public comment. So we will move on to item two, or excuse me, item three, our single schedule appointment, which is a joint meeting with advisory. And Kathy, do you want to call your club to order?
Marty, have you read they required language?
I have.
Okay, so I'm going to call advisory back to order at 7:03 PM on Monday, May the 10th. Mr. Healy, he's already read they required language from Governor Baker, so that will apply to our meeting also.
All right, so where are we? You guys have met for an hour and a half and resolved any issues, is that right?
We've resolved all world issues in that hour and a half.
All right, so now, seriously.
Okay, so give me summarize what we did in the hour and a half.
Sure.
Okay, so the spreadsheet that I circulated today, we voted on with one slight modification, which I'll explain in a second. So we basically, pending this meeting, have voted to amend the Board of Health budget at town meeting to basically reduce it to the amount that's shown in the third column on that spreadsheet.
Kathy?
Yes?
I think that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the spreadsheet that you originally circulated earlier today, right, had the 175, 763, and then I thought the number that...
I did. I said with the slight modification, which I'm...
Okay, sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay, so maybe the next thing to do is to actually show the spreadsheet, share my screen. So can someone say yes? That's what they want me to do?
Yeah, somebody besides me will have to say yes. Vanessa, are you able to allow Kathy to share? Is it Katie or Vanessa who's going to be responsible for taking care of details?
I'll take care of that. I just, you should have that share screen option now, Ms. Cook. Hang on. Okay, so Vanessa, am I ready to share?
Do you have the, is the green button live now at the bottom of your screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good to go.
Well, I'm clicking. There it is. Okay. Can everyone see the spreadsheet? So this is exactly what I circulated with exception of one, two line items. So we voted to restore a couple of small amounts. So I'm just going to put my cursor where we did it. So we put employee training back to their amount in their budget that's printed in the warrant article. So I put it down to the previous year, so we put it back to 2,000. And then I restored the $300 to, or we restored the $300 to advertisers. That's the two changes made from what I circulated this afternoon. So the 176, 863 is the revised budget that we voted on, 7-0, to basically amend their budget at town meeting, which would mean that the amendment is 57,418. So maybe what I should do is walk through this real quick, like I did with advisory, as far as where the numbers came from. So everybody's kind of got, because Lisa called me today with a really good question that needs explaining. So if I could do that first, I think this would help get this done.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense, Kathy. Go ahead.
Okay, so if you start with health director and nurse. Carla McCullough had called me and said that the numbers that were in their budget were wrong, based on what they wanted to do. These are bigger than what, so those two, where I've got my cursor, total about $3,000 more than what you see in column E for them. So we're just fixing an error that they made in their budget there. This reflects 19 hours for the health director at a salary of $110,000 a year and reflects 15 hours a week for the nurse at $90,000 a year. So that's the first two line items. So that's basically their number, but we just fixed it to the right number to do. And I double-checked Carla's number, she's right. And so I did the math independently, and she's exactly right. These are the right numbers for what they have put in their budget. The third one is the admin/business associate. Remember, Board of Health not only wants to put Barbara Sperry completely in their budget and leave her out of the assessors' budget, they want to increase her step from four to five. If you do that, you raise her from an admin to business associate. So I use their term there, but the money that's in column G is not step five, it's step four. It's Barbara's owed salary from fiscal year '21 increased by the 2.8% recommended by the SAP and then split 2416. So this is 24 hours of Barbara Sperry's time at her owed salary increased by 2.8% to get to that number. The next number is the per diem nurse that they have in their budget on top of the full-time nurse. So they wanted per diem nurses and a full-time nurse. So we put that to zero, and I'm going to come back to that one. So just stay with me for this one. I'm going to come back because this one deserves some explaining. The next one is they added a $10,000 scanner because they are concerned about HIPAA violations and believe that that would solve their problem as far as that goes. So we took that out completely. I'm going to come back to that one. Let's see, from that point on, is that's the same? That's the same. They moved the phones to 159. So they still have phones in there. In fact, they doubled the phone cost, but it's in John Parent's utilities budget, so that's moved. That's the same. I'm going to come back to contracted services. 800 is the same. The next one, advisory has an issue with the in-state travel period as a whole. So we actually did go back to fiscal year '21 on that one, and it said, don't know why that one's going up. And then the last one's the same. Okay, so now let me go back to per diem nurse up here on G10. The $300,000, first, Mark's here. So Mark, if I say something wrong, correct me. So this is from a conversation that I had with Mark Purple. So the $300,000 shared services grant that the four towns have been awarded includes a substantial amount for nursing. In fact, it's a 1.5 FTE nurse that is included in that. We felt that that's plenty of money for Southborough to share in to basically satisfy the need for a per diem nurse. So that's why we moved that one to zero. Similar situation when you go down to contracted services. This is one person. He works Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for us, and he works Monday and Tuesday for Boylston, doing basically the same thing. Boylston is one of the four communities that's sharing this grant. This grant does include money for inspections, and based on what Mark sent to me today, it's not just food inspection, it does include house inspections, that is sewer. So there is money in here for the type of inspections that we need more than the other. Mary Lou Whitford has said that we need sewer inspections, excuse me, subject inspections more than we do need food. The other three towns, apparently it's just the opposite. But this grant does appear to include money for both types of inspections. And we felt since the person who's doing our Wednesday, Thursday, Friday also works for Boylston Monday, Tuesday, we should be able to work this out so that we can use some of the shared services grant to basically provide any additional inspection services we need for Monday and Tuesday. So I think that's it, because that's the explanation of why we did what we did. So why don't, Marty, why don't you take it from here as far as seeing what questions the BOS has so that we can try to come to an agreement on this?
Hey Kathy, you didn't mention the $10,000 scanner in terms of going back to.
Thank you, thank you. You're right. Okay, so the $10,000 scanner. The advisory committee voted to, instead of leaving this in this budget, which it really doesn't belong in, is to take it out and increase the reserve fund by $10,000. So that way, when Jason, who is going to work on this, I've actually talked to him, I bet Mark has too. He knows that we need help with HIPAA advice here. When he comes with a recommendation as to what the town should do to satisfy HIPAA for all departments, not just Board of Health, then if there's not enough money in his budget, for example, then the reserve fund could be tapped to basically fund whatever he thinks should be funded, given it would be something that's not expected and would seem to be an appropriate use of reserve funds. So we basically are just taking it out of this budget and recommending that we put it into the reserve fund, so increase reserve fund from 180 to 190. And Mark, where are you? I think it's legal. So it's a net of zero to the overall budget, so I think we can do that at town meeting as far as the two amendments. So we're saying amend Board of Health to go down 57,418 and amend reserve fund to go up by $10,000. It was a very close vote, and advisory was 4 to 3. The other three, the dissenting opinion, wanted to wait to follow town meeting to deal with it completely, just take it out and let Jason come to us, tell us what needs to be done, and then deal with it at fall town meeting. But the other four wanted to go ahead and increase the reserve fund now.
Okay, Kathy, why don't you leave the screen up? Because obviously, we're going to be talking about the numbers. And I'm going to go to Lisa in a second, but let me ask a couple of questions that I think I know the answer to, but I want to make sure I know the answer to. The first is the 57,418 figure. If you, I mean, there are, there are three, three large items, let's put it that way. There are three large items that the one you just mentioned, which is the $10,000 item, which shifts over to the IT, and it gets addressed a different way. And I think that that makes sense to me. The other two items are in contracted service and per diem nurse, and for both of those, there is the hope, expectation, aspiration, whatever the right word is, that those costs get picked up by the shared services grant or, quite frankly, some other funding mechanism that's outside of the town budget, if for some reason shared services isn't the appropriate one. So if you take, if you eliminate those items and a couple of the smaller items you were talking about on the plus and minus side, basically you're left with the health director. The health director.
Now, we're getting, so Marty, so I'm confused. So what I did here is confusing. I just didn't have the breakdown of the 82 to 57 between health director and nurse. So all I'm saying is, so health director's not going down to 52. In fact, something's going up. So we basically supported the 19 hours they've got in there for the health director. So that's not the difference here. The difference is the other things. These two numbers right here, total. They total 86,331, and Board of Health only has 82. So their number was just wrong, so we're trying to help them get their number fixed too. Again, Carla is the one that said it was wrong. Brian had told me that Carla said it was wrong, so I called Carla. She said it's wrong. She sent me her computation, and I checked it independently. So this 82 really should be 86, and it's broken down between these two. So we're not trying to change their health director number here as far as what's in their budget. We're trying to just get it right.
So health director and nurse, you are on all fours with what the Board of Health is requesting?
Yes, but keep in mind too, they really, the numbers are a little bit deceiving because they represent 19 hours for the director and 15, yet they have signed contracts for full-time for both of those. Now, some of you may know what those contracts say exactly. I was told by Board of Health point-blank that those contracts were through 63022. I was told tonight that I'm wrong, that the nurse at least is only through 123121. We don't know for sure what the contract for the health director is as far as its end date goes. So they're counting on CARES Act funding the rest of it and/or an advisory reserve fund transfer.
Okay, so picking up then, again, if you take out the items, again, except for some, they're not exactly nickels and dimes, but for the overall budget, they are. You have three large items, four large items. I'll get to the fourth in a second. I'll repeat the three. The 10,000, the, and the two items that would be covered, the per diem nurse and the contracted services that either shared services grant, or again, if that didn't work out, the aspiration at least is that it'd be covered by some other funding mechanism related to COVID or otherwise. So and I understand the Board of Health doesn't, doesn't, at least as of, I think, this morning when I saw their meeting, although it was a little bit unclear about whether or not they will accept that route. I mean, is the main difference, assuming that they can be convinced, they being the Board of Health, that going the shared services route and taking the $10,000 out of this budget for IT, we're down to about a $22,000 difference between what they're asking for and what at least advisory has voted for earlier tonight. Am I right about that?
Do your math again.
All right, you see the business, the business associate? There's about a $22,000 difference there. The other items seem to me to be either all addressed by shared services or in the, for the office equipment being addressed or potentially addressed as part of an IT expenditure. So it just seems to me that the, the main point of dispute is over that business associate line item. Or is the Board of Health, again, it was hard to tell. I watched their meeting, and I went over it a couple of times, whether or not, because they kept saying $25,000. So I'm assuming maybe that didn't account for the $3,000 difference that you're talking about in the health director nurse calculation. But, but does that mean, do you know that the Board of Health is fine with the items in the other category, which total about $35,000? Or do you not know one way or the other?
I don't think they're fine. Now, the 10,000, they may be fine with, because we're not saying you don't get it. We're just saying we want Jay, our new IT director, to recommend what to do, because you've got more than the Board of Health that needs to comply with HIPAA. You've got several departments that are affected by HIPAA directly. So we told them, we're going to take, you know, we believe, we agree with you, we want it taken care of. We just want to see what Jay recommends, give him a chance to get into the job and come back with a recommendation. So that one I don't think is an issue. The other three are, they do not believe that we should rely on that shared services grant for anything.
Okay, then I'm really, because as I said, they were not talking about... They were not talking about 57 or 47 in their meeting earlier today. I think it was earlier today, right? They were talking about $25,000. So all right, Lisa, I'm going to go to you in a second. I think I understand advisory's numbers, and I'm going to see if anybody else in the, on our board has questions or comments about them. Lisa, go to you first.
Great, thank you. I had watched the majority of advisory as well. I support with what advisory has come forth with, because I think knowing we're committing to a fall town meeting is giving us options. And I think it gives us an opportunity to take a look at all of the federal funding that's coming in and some of the state funding that's coming in as well, and seeing if there's a path forward as far as being able to use those funds. So I am in support of the 176, 863.
Thanks, Lisa. And, you know, Chelsea, I'm going to jump over to Mr. Stivers, because I know he was on the, watching the Board of Health. Maybe you were as well, but I'm going to jump to him first. And Sam, am I right? Wasn't the Board of Health talking about a $25,000 difference, not a $57,000 difference?
Marty, that was my understanding. I see Mary Lou Whitford's in the attendee group, so if she could be brought over, she might be able to clarify that for us.
I think, I think that would be helpful just for that very simple question.
Yeah, that was my understanding. I got a couple other comments, but I'll hold.
No, 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 definitely. And I want to make this quick with Ms. Woodford. Mary Lou, you there?
I am here.
Very simple questions, a couple of questions hopefully. Were you able to see the numbers that Kathy Cook put up?
I'm just looking at them now.
Okay. My main question...
I'm not sure what the question is.
My main question is, I watched your meeting earlier today, and you were talking about a $25,000 difference. This is a $57,000 difference. I guess my question is, there are three large items that are in the, the other category that account, if you do the rough math, for the difference between 25,000 and 57,000. And they are for advisory, a proposed reduction in contracted services, a proposed reduction in office equipment, and actually, it's above the line, a proposed reduction in the per diem nurse with both the nurse item and the contracted services item, at least in terms of hopeful planning, being addressed by a shared services grant or other COVID-related funding. Are you fine with those three reductions? The per diem nurse with the idea that it would be addressed with shared services, the IT equipment, and the contracted services? And I'm not looking for a discussion about whether or not you think you should get them, but from a budget standpoint, are you fine with the way advisory is treating them, which is essentially taking them out of the budget with the idea that they would be addressed by IT longer term? Or for the contracted and per diem services, shared services grants?
So we didn't have a meeting today or yesterday. That was a meeting from a few weeks ago. We have a meeting to, on Wednesday. So some of these issues, we didn't know at our last meeting. Our last meeting, the discussion, the difference was related to the business admin only. As far as moving the IT services, as long as we can be HIPAA compliant and it's covered in another budget, I don't think there would be an issue with that. As far as, and per diem nursing, we don't have any per diem nursing in our current budget. We have a full-time nurse and a full-time health director and a full-time admin. So I don't know where that's coming from. Per diem nurses are all covered by CARES Act. So we're told not to include it in our budget. We don't have any in our budget. As far as coverage for shared services and contractual services, the shared services grant, we got confirmation today on a meeting with them, will absolutely not cover any Title V inspections for Southborough. Will only cover food, which is very minimal, and housing, which is very minimal. So we'll get no support for Title V out of that shared services grant. We will get minimal to no nursing services. Nursing services are only going to cover us when our nurse is on vacation or unable to be at work. So relying on shared services to cover those two big buckets of work that needs to get done is is not, is not going to happen through shared services.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go, Lisa, I'm going to go back to our discussion, but before I do, before I let Ms. Woodford go, I'm going to see if any members of our board or for that reason, matter of advisory, have any questions for, and then I'm going to get back to our discussion. Lisa, anything?
No, just curious if Mr. Purple had said in on any of those meetings today. So it's really not a question for Ms. Woodford.
And Mr. Purple was not in the meeting today where they adamantly told us that there would be absolutely no coverage for Title V.
Marty, I had a quick question.
Yeah, Andrew, go ahead.
So, Mary Lou, I see your budget on ClearGov, which equals the 234, 281. And I do see the line item for $16,800 for temporary services. And in the description, it says 40 hours for per diem nurses. So should that 16,800 just come out altogether?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that at least we agree on, so that was...
Okay, just for the record, that is in the printed budget in the warrant, so that needs to be amended at town meeting to get that out. So good.
So the 16,800 is gone?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not gone yet. It won't be gone until it gets amended at town meeting.
But in terms of, in terms of the Board of Health's proposal, it's gone? Correct?
Yes, because if we need per diem nursing services, we'll have CARES Act to cover that.
Okay. All right, now, Ms. Malanowski, I'm going to go to you. And Sam, I haven't forgotten you, but I wanted your answer on that 25,000. So Chelsea, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mary Lou.
Hi.
Do you, do your numbers tie out to what's on the screen here under column G for health director and nurse?
I believe so. Do you have the...
The 52,451 for the health director?
Mary Lou, they don't. Carla sent me the difference. So she's done the computation. Your numbers are actually low. So the numbers in column G are correct. Carla did the numbers, and I did an independent computation. So your numbers are too low if you want 19 hours for the health director and 15 for the nurse and annual salaries of 110K and 90K. So Carla knows, you know, you've got to have 52.2 weeks. So she's done it very exact. So your numbers are actually are low. So we, the numbers to the right total about 86,000. And I keep, I don't, I don't know how you broke up the 82 to 57. That's why I showed this the way I did. So maybe one's right and one's wrong, or maybe they're both wrong, but...
6610 for the health director and 40, 27, oh, sorry. We calculate it out by the hours that they're actually getting paid. That's what was calculated out. So I'll double-check those numbers before...
And I'll send you what Carla sent me, so you can look at that too.
Okay, yeah, because I have not got anything from Carla related to that.
And again, we're giving you, just to be clear, we're increasing yours, not decreasing it. So we're trying to get you to get to the right number there.
Okay, and just, I put in the chat to clarify the current contract that we have with... Okay, and just, I put in the chat to clarify, the current contract that we have with the public health nurse goes through December 30th. Because once we got approval from Advisory to backstop that through June 30th, that contract hasn't been rewritten yet. So currently, the current contract goes through December 30. Our plan is to extend that contract to June of '22. The current health director, as you remember, we had an interim, short-term per diem contract with her that ends on June 30th of 2021. And we planned on writing that because after we got the backstop for Advisory to so her contract will be written July 1 through June 30th of '22. So that's why you have a difference in the contract dates. Because we got approval from Advisory after those were already written.
All right, Chelsea, back to you.
Okay, thank you. And Mary Lou, can you explain what Southborough is getting allocated through the shared services grant? So that way, I think we all understand the CARES funding opportunities. But if you could kind of articulate what we're getting out of shared services.
Sure. Southborough will see no money from shared services grant. Northborough is the fiscal agent. They will receive the $300,000 a year for three years. They will manage, there's an advisory from each, one person from each town that will help sort of manage how that comes. The money is going to one and a half position of a contracted public health nurse that's going to be shared by four towns. And then the inspectional service, inspectionals for only food and housing, which Southborough has the least need in that area. Southborough has the least need in nursing area. So the benefit to Southborough is getting high expensive software to manage inspectional services and that will get paid for out of the grant. But that's basically in a nutshell, and the details are still to be worked out. We just received approval and the the group is meeting to look at the scope and how it's going to divide out. But I don't see much coming to Southborough from that shared services grant.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Marty.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. Brian, are you there?
Yep, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep, all right. Actually, that column just going to be logging on in a minute. I guess it's I don't know, it just seems to me that it's unclear. It's uncertain or certainly is not promising that we're going to get shared services money for the staffing. And and I just think that we need to include that in the budget. Maybe I'm looking at it at it wrong because I have been able to follow along on the spreadsheet, but I guess I'm just maybe a little bit unclear on that aspect of.
The two shared services amounts on the spreadsheet, Mary Lou's already said that the 16,8 should be removed from their budget. So that has to be amended because they're going to use CARES for that. So there's no disagreement on that one. So there's the issue is contracted services as far as the septic inspections.
Yep.
So it seems like that is not going to get funded out of shared services. So that needs to be covered in some other manner?
Correct. Now, remember that contracted line is the, in that contracted line, almost 90% of that money comes back to the town. When inspectional services happen, there's fees that come back to the town. So even though it's in the budget, that money comes to the town. We received over $50,000 this year in contractual services.
So Brian, if I can follow up on your, on your comment question, the
Go ahead.
So the, in the, the inspection services have nothing to do with COVID. It is an increase from 52 to 64, just based on a projection for the increased need from one fiscal year to the next? Is that an accurate statement?
Marty, it goes from three days to five days.
I understand that, but I'm talking about in terms of what has to be, what is, in other words, the perceived need. There's an additional $12,000 from one year to the next. And and is that because of a perceived need for the, those additional services? And what, what is the metric that supports that?
The, the need is that there's a new requirement that every, every house that's bought and sold, every business that's bought and sold, it's a new requirement that has to go through the building department. I mean, go through the health department. So there's, the need has increased.
And I guess Kathy, going to, you know, Advisory on the spot, assume that that, you all didn't have that information that apparently was shared this morning about the, it sounds like the inability of that additional cost to be covered by shared services. Do you expect that that would affect the view of Advisory on whether or not to stay with your $52,000 number or change it?
It might, Marty. But if you, so where is Mr. Purple? So what, when you say that the, first of all, why don't we have input into how the shared services grant is going to be used? I understand it was written a certain way, but I don't, I wouldn't think it's so locked in that the other three towns who happen to need more food than septic get it and we don't. So I don't see why we don't have a voice in how that piece of it gets used. They're going to hire a .8 of a person to be shared among four towns. And so what Mary Lou is saying is that, well, we don't, we won't get to use them because we can't. The stuff that we need them for is not what they're doing. So I don't see why we don't have more input into that. But putting that aside for a moment, the thing that was new that we've heard just now is that there is a new law or new rule that says the health department has to be involved in all purchase and sales of real estate. I had thought that was already the case. That's what Title V is. So I don't know what that new law or rule is. That's the first time we've heard that piece of it. I thought what they were trying to cover is that, I believe his name is Dennis, is only available to work Wednesday, Thursday and Friday because he works for Boylston, doing the same thing Monday and Tuesday. And therefore, they wanted to have some availability when inspections need to be done on a Monday or Tuesday. And that's why this was being increased. So this is news to us as far as the reason for the increase.
Okay, can we get, is, is there? And I'm not doubting, Mary Lou, what you just said, is there substantiation for that? Is there, is there some record that indicates that? And again, that ties to a metric for the additional hours that'll be needed to cover that change in the law or the regs?
Yeah, so basically, what Kathy, what you said is correct in that we're, we hopefully Dennis will get freed up till we can use him more. But Dennis also works for Boylston. So we may have to use additional contract services to cover Monday and Tuesday. Paul Pazinski has been covering emergencies on Mondays and Tuesdays up to now. He's not going to be doing that after July 1. So we basically have no coverage for Mondays and Tuesdays. There are many times, there are situations will put the town at tremendous liability and risk if there's not someone able to go out and look at an inspection that's got stopped in the middle. There's a hole open, there's no fence around it. There's just, there's numerous things that I can sort of point to. And also, you know, to me, this is money that's coming back to the town. So it's, I, I, I just, I'm struggling with.
So Mary Lou, if you were saying we're missing out on some fees because we don't have anybody available on Monday or Tuesday, that's one thing. But I don't think you're saying that the inspections get done, they just get done right now Wednesday through Friday. So we get the same amount of revenue, whether it's Monday through Friday or Wednesday through Friday. So I'm not sure that's convincing. But what is probably the more convincing argument of the ones that you're making is that the shared services, they're adamant that there is no, none of that .8 FTE can be used for septics. And if that's true, that it really is written in stone, then that's something that we did not understand. Because, and I may misinterpret what Mark has said to me today. He said in an email, I didn't have a chance to question him, but he said it is, there is home inspection money in there. So I don't know what home inspection money is if it's not
It's, it's housing, housing inspections, which is different. Housing complaints, when you have a, go out and do a, it's a housing inspection, which it's not a home inspection. It's not a septic inspection. And I specifically asked that at our meeting today on the shared services. And the reason that we don't have any say in this is because Northborough is increasing the hours of their current inspector to go from seven to 30 to cover the other town's needs. That inspector is not Title V certified. So that inspector cannot do that, and they have no money to add additional Title V certified people to do that. So they are adamant that that cannot happen, and that won't, won't happen in the current shared services grant.
Can I just stop for one second? I think John Rooney just chatted that he got kicked out of the the participant room or the, what did he call it?
I think he's back in.
He's back in now.
I'm back in, thanks, Marty.
Okay, John. Well, I guess here in terms of, and I'm going to go see if Brian has anything else. But but we're not going to resolve this tonight, but let's get this resolved and find out. I agree with Kathy, we should push pretty hard. And this is a $300,000 grant and, and, you know, kudos to, to Northborough for taking the lead in, you know, doing the applications and everything like that. But it's a, but it's a shared grant among a number of different towns. And let's nail down what it is Southborough stands to benefit from that, being pretty aggressive about that. So Mark, I guess I'll put that on you to, to, you know, to grind that out and try to get as good an answer as we can to, to, to that question.
Sure.
Okay. And and Brian, do you have anything else or should I go to Mr. Stivers?
Go to Mr. Stivers.
Okay, Sam?
Thanks. I guess a couple of things. One, I guess I've been following the Board of Health and the Advisory discussions on this. So I think I understand where a lot of the numbers are coming from. As I've stated before, you know, my general position is that I'm supportive of what the Board of Health thinks they need as an independent board to get the job done here. I hate to throw another wild card in here, but there's another funding source that I think is very real, that might have a bearing on some of this stuff. As I've commented previously, I've been following this American Rescue Plan. And we're going to get within the next month here, apparently, something like $500,000. One of the explicit uses for that is COVID-related expenses. And we've got a lot of latitude in terms of how we use that. And I haven't made it all the way through the 150 pages of the interim final rule that describes what you can do and what you can't do with that. But it sure seems to me there's a good chance that we can actually find ways to use some of that money for these kinds of services, whether it's health director, nurse, et cetera. And that money is available for certainly the full year of FY '22, as a matter of fact. So we don't have the calendar year cutoff issue. So it seems to me that we ought to at least look at that very closely to understand if that gives us some relief here in terms of budget. And maybe that, again, creates another possibility for us to think about here. So my bottom line is there's still stuff coming out. And it's in some sense too early to nail it down, given, you know, some of these things that are still moving parts. But I think, again, we ought to look at the American Rescue Plan very closely to look for funding flexibility for several of these things, plus a whole boatload of other things through that money as well.
So wait, we've got to hold on a second and go back here. We lose insight of how we got to this point. Advisory has worked very hard with Mary Lou and her board to basically try to recommend the budget that their independent board wants for fiscal year '22. We basically supported every single thing in their budget, including wanting to use Barbara Speary more than what their 24 hours that they are allocated right now would allow them to do. So what we asked them to do is to please leave the budget at 2416, 24 hours in Board of Health, 16 in assessors. I talked to Paul Sibelli three times. Paul Sibelli said, Kathy, whatever they want, they get. We will put Barbara Speary down at the Board of Health because the Board of Health said they would like her to be there nine to five and have the office open, which has not been in the past. We didn't realize that Barbara Speary didn't have a computer. She was using her own laptop. So we said, we'll fix that so that she can use the software from down there and tap into assessors. The only thing Paul said is, I just may need a couple of hours here or there. And by doing that, leaving it 2416, any excess hours that Barbara works above what's in her budget, we could get CARES Act reimbursement. So that was our MO for trying to do what we did. So we basically did support their budget. Other than Barbara Speary might have to work for Paul Sibelli a little bit here and there, but Paul was bending over backwards to try to accommodate them. And that's the last piece. And they, they, they would not vote to keep that budget split 2416 between the two departments. So that was the issue at the very end that we just could not agree on. And all we were trying to do is make sure that we tried to maximize the CARES Act funding, which will not reimburse you if you've got amounts in a budget. And the Board of Health budget isn't one that's most conducive to being reimbursed, not the assessor's office. So it made much more sense to basically keep it 2416. If Barbara works 38 hours, that 14 hours would get reimbursed for free cares. And then we've got the ability then to have a special town meeting. We can change things then. We've also got the ability to get out of COVID and see where things really stand and what this department really should look like without making a commitment to convert two part-time, three part-time positions to full-time, which is what the effect of this budget is. So we agreed last year, we weren't going to do, we weren't going to hire anybody else. We are, in effect, with this budget approving three people to go to full-time in this budget where they were part-time in fiscal year '21. So that's where we left it. And then because of that, we said, okay, let's just go back and look at this. And now we've got the shared services grant, let's take that into account. So that's what we've done with this proposal tonight.
Okay, no, I get it, I think. But there, there, it has been a bit of a moving target for quite a while. Nobody's fault, just, it's a, it's a, it's a crazy year with, with COVID and everything else.
But when Sam and Tim let's say, you know, don't micromanage, you know, someone's budget, we didn't. We really were giving them everything they asked for. We just were asking for help to do it in a financially prudent manner, given that in essence, they are doubling their budget from one year to the next. So we weren't trying to micromanage what they wanted. We were trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way so we could tap into all this CARES money that are sitting out there that we're not using.
Okay, so again, I'm going to based on what you've said, other than the, what we talked about a couple of minutes ago, the contracted services and whether or not, you know, to sort of flesh out and I'm pretty sure I heard Mark say, yes, he'll, he'll do the legwork on this to figure out exactly what sort of flexibility we may have for that contracted services line item under the shared services grant and what kind of reaction we get for an aggressive push to see if amounts of that can be covered. Other than that, the 16,8 is gone. So the difference is in 57,000. It's about 40, a little over 40,000, 40,000 and change. Most of that comes from what you just described, Kathy, which is the difference between the, how to deal with the, the line there that's identified as business associate. That, so that remains the, the primary bone of contention between the numbers that you support versus the numbers that the Board of Health is pushing. And quite frankly, the numbers in terms of flexibility that, that the Board of Selectment, I think from a consensus standpoint, I don't think we've taken an act, we obviously haven't taken an, an actual vote on these numbers. But is that, again, I know I'm talking in general terms, but, but it just seems to, other than resolving that contracted services line item, with the $10,000 being, you know, with the discretion of the IT director to deal with the HIPAA issues and with the 16,8 gone, other than resolving the issue on contracted services, we're back to business associate. Am I right about that?
Yes, we're back to where we started. And not to beat on Mr. Stivers, who, as he knows, I have great respect for. But Sam, you're the one that really pushes using CARES Act money. We're trying to use CARES Act money here.
And this, this isn't CARES Act that I'm actually pushing now, but same concept.
But it's still, who cares where it comes from, you know, from which law? It's still the same thing. It's all fungible.
Okay, again, I guess my reaction is what, what Kathy has just outlined in terms of, of the, the, the work is being provided for. It just is not going entirely into the Board of Health budget. of Health budget, it's being shared between the Board of Health, and I've always found Mr. Sibelli to be pretty cooperative, and if he says that he's willing to make those hours available, I, I take him at his word. Um, it, it, it seems to provide the services that are being asked for, it provides additional flexibility, and it'll, it, it, um, uh, maybe even satisfies Mr. Stivers' hope for, uh, of getting additional funding down the line, um, that might even be able to be addressed at a fall town meeting. So that's my general view of things. Um, I don't know if that's the rest of the board's view of things, so I guess I'll go first to Ms. Brascio.
Yeah, Marty, I, I, I agree with you. Um, I'd, I'd like to definitely hear, uh, Mr. Purple speak to our counterparts and find out certainly about the contracted services. I'm certainly on page with the, the business associate at the, at the lower number and utilizing as much as we can through the, um, CARES and whatever else is currently out there. So, um, I, I think we're on the same page, uh, with advisory as well, so, thank you.
All right, Chelsea?
Yes, I, I'm on the same page with the business, business associate. Um, I think for the contracted services, um, I'd like to see the revenues tied to that too, um, and see if the expenses tie out to the revenues. Um, and maybe Mary Lou can answer this. Um, are you expecting that with the twelve thousand dollar increase that there be a close offset to that on the revenue side?
There's definitely an offset, totally. Every, every inspectional service that's done, there's a fee that's charged. So it, it's anywhere between eighty and ninety percent of what's in the budget comes back to the town.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Nothing additional at this point.
Okay, thanks Brian, Sam.
I'd like to hear what the Board of Health has to say about it, I'm not quite there yet.
I, I can, I can tell you that.
Dude, I thought Chelsea...
They wanted to be handled the, the other way. What, what do you need to hear?
Um, I'd like to get their view of your summary, I guess.
All, all right, Mary Lou? Can you answer Mr. Stivers' question?
What's the question, Sam?
Just Marty's summary of, uh, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Marty, but basically the concept was that, uh, the view that, uh, Board of Health is getting the resources it needs, it simply is not coming out of the same budget that, uh, Board of Health is, is proposed.
So as far as the business admin is, um, very concerning to me, we are, we need a full-time business admin, we have new work being added, the additional vaccines that are gonna be needed to vaccinate the kids, um, we're now going down to age twelve shortly, probably down to age six, and before school year starts. Any vaccines that we do causes substantial billing that needs to happen in order for, to get reimbursed for what's happening. We have the, the new holler licenses that are, are coming out.
Hey, Mary Lou, can, this is Marty Hulley, can I interrupt you?
Yeah, sure.
We're, we're not doubting the, 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 the need for the additional work. What, what is being, the, the question is, if you are getting the, the hours, but they are coming from, um, however you wanna view it, a, a, a donation, a, a, a sharing of the position or otherwise, but, 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 uh, accepting Mr. Sibelli at his word, that he will allow that the, um, those services to be provided, are you not getting the services that you're describing? And if so, why is there a problem with the fact that it's not coming out of the Board of Health budget, it's coming out of the assessor's budget and the Board of Health budget? Why is that an issue?
So the concern is that we can't predict the future, and we don't know what happens. What if Mr. Sibelli leaves his job, he, something happens to him, there's a new person that doesn't agree to split that. There's sixteen hours that we cannot do without, and apparently he needs help there. So I, I just think it's putting too much at risk to the Board of Health to have someone there full-time. Um, those sixteen hours will be out of our control, um, and, and so if there's all, all of a sudden a need at the assessor's office, then, then we're at a loss. Um, if the assassin needs it...
Ms. Woodford, I'm gonna cut, Ms. Woodford, I get it. Um, and I, I, I see where the loggerhead is, um, and, um, again, we're not, your, your view is different than, than, um, the view of doing it through a shared way, and we're not, we're just not gonna resolve that, um, we're not gonna resolve that tonight. I just wanted to understand what the concern was, and I do understand it, I think everybody else does, so thank you for that. Um, okay, we were with, anything else, Sam?
Nope, that's the key thing, so I, I guess I defer to Board of Health on that one.
Okay, Kathy, anything, um, you, you all wanna add?
One more thing is, we're, we're kind of overlooking, um, Mr. Sibelli completely. What's he gonna do if this gets approved? Um, as far as I know, um, Board of Health has not talked to the assessor about this, they just assume, um, that they can do this, they can just, um, basically take Barbara. Um, and Paul's has kinda sat back and said, you know, whatever they need is fine, whatever, that's what he's, whatever they need is fine, but that leaves him with nobody, so he's gonna have to be addressed somehow, some way too. Yeah, I know he's reached out, um, to a couple people, but, um, that hasn't worked out, so he's gonna have to have, um, something done for him.
Okay, that's a personnel decision though, I mean, it's, I, I get the point, but, um, okay, um, our, our board, I, I, I think I understand where we are, um, but, I mean, I guess my inclination is, the, the one thing that we can certainly resolve tonight is the, um, or at least take a vote on tonight, there's uncertainty about the, um, contracted services, so I, I'd be inclined not to take a vote on that tonight, um, but, if, I'm, so I'll make the motion, I move that the Board of Selectmen, um, support the budget that was approved by advisory early, earlier tonight, seven to nothing, with the following exceptions. Number one, that the per diem nurse number of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars is removed, um, actually it's not in your budget, so we don't have to remove it.
It's already out.
All right, it's already out. So the only except, so with the exception of, of, of leaving to a later, um, um, vote after additional information is, uh, obtained, that the Board of Selectmen support the, um, the budget numbers that were approved by advisory earlier tonight, um, with the exception of the contracted services number. That's my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Brascio. We've had a lot of discussion anymore.
Mr. Chairman, did you wanna leave in the ten thousand dollars in the office equipment?
They already took it out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, I made that same mistake, Mark, looking at the, uh, the per diem nurse, uh, but, 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 yeah, we want that out, but it's already out. But thanks for flagging that. So no further discussion, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Shea?
Aye.
See, I've already forgotten you, Brian. You're not even gone yet, and I'm, I'm trying to remember who you were. Uh, Mr. Stivers?
Nay.
And Mr. Hulley is aye. So, um, Kathy, basically, other than the, the contracted services that, that, um, remains a little bit in flux, we have supported the same budget that advisory supported earlier tonight.
Okay, not to tell you what to do, but you probably ought to vote on the reserve fund going from one eighty to one ninety also, which is what advisory has done, so that would be another vote you'll need to take.
I will move that.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stivers, I think. Um, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Uh, I will vote aye, but I guess, I guess I would've been happier if that could put into another budget rather than reserve fund, and I think we're just getting into the habit of using reserve fund as a budget line item.
Brian, we tried to do that, um, so that was one of our options, but it got, so we tried to put it in MIS, that's where a couple people wanted, then we also tried to just wait for fall town meeting and let Jason come to us and say what needs to be done, and then figure out where it should go, um, but it was four to three to, um, to do it with reserve fund.
So Brian, you were aye?
That was, I was aye, but, um, it was a reserved aye, but it's an aye.
And Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Hulley is aye. Um, so that's approved five, nothing. Um, Kathy, can we let you folks go now?
Do we wanna talk about South Union at all? Um, we'd love to hear what you guys have to say if it's appropriate, so, um, we talked about it tonight, but obviously didn't vote. Um, so that we were interested in, and then we were interested in whether you've heard from Aldo as far as the language that Marty Houlihan has said she's gonna amend the elimination bylaw to include as far as making it clear when the effective date is, 'cause our vote was against that bylaw unless it gets added, so we're interested to see if, um, Aldo has approved what they, what they have proposed on that one, and then whether Aldo has said that, um, having a ninety percent vote to sell the townhouse, um, is also going to pass legal muster.
So I guess two things, there was an email with a, with a, um, response to the planning board that, I read it quickly, it, it came in late this afternoon, or at least I saw it late this afternoon, um, and I think it is, um, again, I can't imagine there's, I, I, I think it endorsed some language that would accomplish what everybody seems to think is appropriate to accomplish here. Um, uh, I, I don't think it's rocket science, so again, I didn't, I didn't dive deeply into it, but, but as long as the planning board is willing to go with some language that, that clarifies the, um, uh, uh, when the, when the, the bylaw is applicable, I, I, I just don't think it's gonna be a, a problem for this board. Um, I mean, the Chode issue was resolved, it turns out that those lights are, fall, already fall within the, um, requirements of the bylaw. The, um, the enforcement is, is, is gonna have to be addressed down the line. Um, the main thing was the applicability, and it, it seems like, um, again, that seems like an easy issue to address. I didn't look, did anybody else look deeply at the language that, that, um, was discussed in the letter? Again, I just did not have the time.
Excuse me, Marty?
Yeah.
Aldo's actually in the attendees' room, I don't know if that's a question that can, wants to be directed to him?
Oh, sure, no, 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 though, thanks for noticing that.
Yeah.
All right, Vanessa, can we bring Mr. Cipriano over?
And Kathy, can you stop sharing screen, do you mind?
No, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get those numbers out of here.
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Cipriano is on his way. Hello Aldo, how are you?
I'm well, good evening, everybody.
Did you hear what we were talking about?
Yes, I, I actually rendered three legal opinions on three points to the planning board today. Um, the first one had to do with the, um, issue of being, being able to reinstate constructive grant language at the town meeting, and my conclusion was that it could be done. It was, it wasn't something that was constrained by any of the principles of not being able to have town meeting consideration, so that's available for the town meeting consideration. Number one. And, um, the other issue had to do with, uh, trying to cure the language relative to applicability and deal with, um, the, um, the issue of grandfathering, which is not a real issue, and we did come up with la, a language change for the bylaw, which we think addressed everybody's concern, uh, and that was furnished to the planning board.
And, and, and Aldo, that, could you just give a quick, the, the concerns that we raised were number one, that the, um, that the new illumination standards do not immediately attach to all lighting in the town. That's addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that if you weren't in compliance before, um, you're not grandfathered, um, under the new, um, illumination standards. That was number two.
You, you get, um, you get the, um, however, you get the opportunity to come into compliance, um, at a later time, I believe.
Okay. Um, and number three, you, i- if and when you have to replace, um, any illumination that is not in compliance, or that, that, that is currently in compliance, but is no longer in compliance with the new standards, that you have to replace, um, consistent with the new standards, and presumably, you know, for, for here ever after, stay in compliance with them.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is everybody in the Board of Selectmen good with, with, uh, um, and, and your, 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 you, did you draft the language, Aldo?
I did, I, I actually formulated a revised version, based a lot on what your concerns were and what the planning board was saying, trying to come into some clear, common ground, um, in the provision, and that's, I, we tried to do that. Planning board told me, the, uh, the planner told me that she thought it was much clearer, we'll see.
Okay. Um, so with that, again, I haven't looked at it carefully, but I trust that Mr. Cipriano knows what he's doing. Um, it sounds like the, although, were there any other concerns about the bylaw that the Board of Selectmen wanted to address?
From my viewpoint?
No, 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 this is from, from our, and I, again, I raised a lot of them, and I'm fine. So I did, I'm just checking to see if anybody else on the board has any concerns that they, they would like to talk to Mr. Cipriano about.
I read the opinion, I'm fine.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna loop back to the, um, constructive, um, uh, language, and, and I'm gonna tab you, Mr. Stivers. That's two out of three, Aldo, what's the third? You said they were asked for three opinions.
The days in the, um, townhouse.
The ninety percent vote.
Ninety percent, yeah.
Did you address that in your letter today?
No, that, the, in terms of the...
Not a planning board issue.
Oh, no, that, that, I did not, I was not asked to address that, recently.
Oh, you have not? Okay.
No, I believe, I, I just interject, Mr. Chairman, I believe that was something that council had addressed in his initial review, um, with, um, uh, of the articles, and then I think, Aldo, there was a subsequent, subsequent review that you issued where, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get this clean, I can tell, but, um, essentially that, um, you know, by creating the ninety percent issue, I think it was a ninety-five percent issue...
Ninety-five.
At one point, that they were, they were basically, um, uh, uh, traipsing a little bit on the selectmen's authority to, to dispose of property, again, I'm not getting that quite right, but maybe the gist?
No, you, you are getting that quite right. When I saw that language, I, I couldn't tie it to any provision of law, and it is the Board of Selectmen is the chief executive authority that controls the, the use and the disposition of the townhouse and the grounds, so to have put that in, which is like an affirmative approach to how that can be undone, in other words, town meeting can make the decision, um, I felt was a little trampling on the executive authority.
Okay.
And that information...
Executive branch, I support that opinion.
Yeah, that was passed along to CPC, along with, uh, the advice of bond counsel for their consideration, they just decided to reduce the initial ninety-five percent to ninety percent and call it a day.
Okay, we're less enforceable.
As a non-attorney, are we concluding that it is legal to have that in the bylaw? We can actually, you can actually do that.
Well, bond counsel seems to be okay with it for investment purposes, correct, Mark?
Yeah, I believe so, I, I have not, I did not look at the revised article that bond counsel sent, Mr. Ballantyne got that recently and said that they tweaked the language, I don't think it was anything substantive, um, but I don't think they've opined, I don't think there's an issue with that, uh, counselor with regard to the bondability of the article.
Well, I fervently believe that it's an executive authority decision, and if it passes with that language, I'm not sure it's enforceable.
Yeah, I think it is, I think the good word is nugatory. Um, it will be, it'll, it'll exist, but will have no effect.
That's about it.
That's my view. Um, okay, um, Aldo, I, we are, um, we're slated for you later in executive session, I just wanna, I don't see John Davis yet, um, but I think his, our conversation with him is likely to be shorter than our conversation with you, so I'm gonna flip the order that it's listed, if that's all right, and have you come in after him.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, anything else for Mr. Cipriano before we, uh, send him back to participants or attendees? Okay, Aldo, thank you very much.
Very good, take care.
So Marty, our last point is, it's a pretty important one, is South Union, so, um, we just, we just talked about, so some people thought the price was good, some people didn't, blah, 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 but this is the important part of what we discussed, and if you, if you heard us, you, you know this, um, we don't believe that, um, giving the impression that they're... And if you you heard us, you hear we know this. We don't believe that, giving the impression that there is a facade protection is appropriate. Yes, these guys have said, we're going to keep the building, we're going to rehab and put two condos in it. But down the road, it can be sold and there's no there's no no prohibition for it being torn down. So we believe the points that were awarded for facade protection were properly inappropriate. And we know there's only one bid, so it just means it was a little. So we think the points were much they were given much more credit than what that bid actually deserved. So that's just the opinion advisory. We don't have much to do with this. So we're waiting to hear what you guys think as far as whether you're going to go forward with this so we can take our final vote, which we probably won't do till town meeting.
Well, we're going to have an initial discussion about it. I mean, we can we can jump ahead and get folks thoughts while we've got advisory here. Does anybody have an objection to moving up item five? What is that? Roman numeral six, B? And at least having a partial, maybe a full discussion of that item. Does anybody object to that? No. Okay. All right. You know what? I am going to hold my comments on this and see if I'm going to I'm going to start with you, Mr. Stivers. Just because I want to. And you're looking way too complacent there. I'm going to jar you out of it and get your comments first or any questions you have, just reactions to the to the single bid, to the amount of the bid. Yeah, I I'm not quite sure, Kathy, how much it matters in terms of the points, given that there's one bid. But anyway, let's start with Mr. Stivers.
I did listen to the advisory conversation about this, and I share their concern. I think one of the things that I was interested in is some preservation aspect to it. And while this does move in that direction, it doesn't provide much assurance of permanence with that. I was also, I guess, a little disappointed in the proposed price. I think that there's a lot of property there. And it seems to me that someone might be able to redo something different to squeeze more value out of it. I'm interested in understanding the economics for the town in terms of you get the cash infusion at the beginning. Then you also have related expenses in terms of what does it cost us to maintain that building indefinitely? What value do we get from keeping it? And if we do build five dwelling units on that parcel, what does that do for the cost of, let's say, kids in school incrementally from those additional housing units there, et cetera? So I think there's more complete economic analysis to do around it. And it's not, again, off the top of my head, immediately obvious what we're going to do with whether this price is one that we wind up net ahead on or not. So again, it's I still got a lot of questions about it.
I'm going to go backwards. Brian?
Hey, Marty, sorry, can I just interrupt? Just Capitol meeting posted a a meeting related to this topic. And I do see a quorum in the audience. So if you're intending to do the conversation now, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to bring them in. Or you want to wait till the board's comments and then I can convene capital planning and we can weigh in, whatever works for you.
Let's let's get everybody at the party. You got a we may as well.
Sorry, sorry, Brian. So Vanessa, it looks like Jeff, Joe, and did I miss anyone? Yeah, that's it. So we have six out of seven.
Okay, before we'll we'll loop back to you, Jason, but I'm going to go through.
Totally fine.
It'll give you an idea for what what folks are thinking. So Brian, Shay, back to you while we're getting folks over.
Sorry, Marty, can I just officially call this order?
Is this just because of Brian you do this?
Just step all over me on the last night here.
To order eight fourteen.
All right, Jason, is it okay for Mr. Shay to speak? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Brian.
All right, a couple of things. Having been through the Fayetteville Hall disposition, I was actually surprised the bid price was as high as it was, quite honestly, at the $700,000. I did not have the same concern with the facade. It's we're certainly seen did seem as though it was the intent to restore that structure and certainly restore the the stairs out front. And our, you know, demolition delay bylaw is still in place. So if there were a down the road and attempt to try and do something differently with that building, as it stands now, demolition delay bylaw still comes into comes into play. The one thing that I did have the concern with was the fact that one of the partners who submitted the bid is also on the Capitol Committee. And I'm not no accusations in any way, shape or form, but I think that that needs to be vetted and, you know, timeframes for when that person participated in votes on the Capitol Committee with respect to the timing of the RFP. I just I just want to make sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's with respect to that. And, you know, I think well-placed calls to Attorney of the Day, the AG's office is is in order just to just to be sure that that is completely kosher, if you will.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I suspect everybody thinks that's fair, including the individual involved. Is that it, Brian? Okay, Ms. Malinowski?
So I would have liked to see more than one bid come in to give the residents a comparison on, one, the price and two, what was going to be done with the property. So I'm on the fence on whether to actually bring it to town meeting or not.
All right, and Ms. Brash, you?
Thank you. So one of the things that that stood out to me was I was surprised also that there was only one bid. The amount of the bid, I was a little surprised by that, too. I know we we have options here is to disposition of this property. I know Shopsey's been very vocal in in looking for affordable housing. And with the new bill that passed for the new zoning district, you know, within X half a mile of the train, I think we need to weigh the opportunity of based on a bid of $700,000, what the value is and potentially looking at some type of affordable units, being able to do something potentially there. So I'm I'm not ready to bring this forward to town meeting as it stands today. I think there's too many questions left unanswered. That's it. Thank you.
I'm sensing that there's not a consensus on the Board of Selectmen for bringing it to town meeting. My inclination would be to bring it to town meeting, even though my initial reaction, Mr. Purple, let you know, was what? One bid, $700,000? But then I thought, and I I I don't know if I was channeling Mr. Shay or what, but back to the what happened with Fayetteville. And, you know, way back when, when we first started talking about this, I thought it made sense. I understand why it didn't, although I still would have liked to try to figure out a way to do it, to do do two RFPs and do one without just do what you want with the property. And I understand there are concerns with that and the like, but I think you know, I grew up in a town with a lot of old buildings, historic buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And honestly, a lot of them were protected in a way that you you protected you protected facades and things like that, but they really didn't look like what they had been. They were turned into apartment buildings and things like that. And I I I think that's what's likely to happen here with any sort of construction. That's my view. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but I think that's likely to happen. And and, you know, even if there's enough bricks or whatever left to qualify as as the facade, it's not going to be the building that was there before. And I think if that is the if that is the requirement, and it may well be that that's the town's requirement, I think $700,000, that number is going to go way down, quite frankly. And now that doesn't mean the town doesn't go that route. But again, taking into consideration that that a decent amount of of maintaining of the structure was included in the bid. And Mr. Shay is right, the demolition bylaw would have to come into effect for the use of that property. I mean, I think $700,000, again, looking at it through the prism of what happened at Fayetteville, is a decent price. And the other side of that is if the town doesn't go down that route, obviously, the price could go up. I'd be surprised, but it could in some other configuration. But the and maybe, Jason, this is something you guys have thought about on the capital side of things. What's the cost of not doing something now in terms of continued maintenance of the building, opportunity cost and things like that? So I guess with that, you've heard from all five of us now. So maybe I'll kick it to you wherever you are. There you are on my screen. And see if you guys have thought about that, talked about any of those issues and and where you all are at in terms of consideration of this. Sorry to be a little long-winded.
No, I I understand where you're where you're going. I guess, Marty, I'll just preface everything I'm going to say is our committee has not met since the bid came in and did not have access to all the same documentation that you have at this point. So I think it would be unfair for them to be able to comment on some of the specifics. I think it was only circulated to the BOSS members, but obviously I'm familiar with them as the the scoring member with Ms. Esposito. But I I think there's a few things to consider here to answer your questions. And I may want to address some of the comments that came in just to help help everyone think about pros and cons, right? So first and foremost, when we made the initial vote last fall, early, late summer, early fall, to come to you to start talking about this, we were working with two numbers. One is that this building costs about $37,000 a year to maintain, to house two departments, which is just that's just all the utility, but you know, that's all the stuff that's in John Parent's budget related to this building. In addition, we were looking at over 500 K of capital to be spent in the next 10 years on the building with a good majority of it coming sooner rather than later. I reconfirmed with Mr. Parent in advance at tonight's meeting, you know, had any of that changed? Did you see any sort of deteriorating conditions since he had made that assessment, et cetera? And he he stood by that. He said, if we don't do anything tonight, right, and and brings on the town meeting, then you're going to be in a situation where there will be a cap some capital in FY '23 on town meeting floor specifically related to the painting. In addition, you know, the furnace and the roof have a few more years to go before you'd be looking at any sort of significant sort of money involved. So I think those are the big items you should think about. I think some of the other items that may or may not have financial considerations is you have two departments in that building right now. Those departments would need a home. We've thought about spots for them, and I think I want to make sure everyone saw the sentence in the the bid itself is it does seem like the bidders are willing to work with the town on timing, very similar to what we all dealt with related to the public safety building in terms of, you know, what's the timing of when when departments would actually have to vacate for people to do their work? So I think that's just something that needs to be considered. I have talked to Tim and to Sarah as the department heads residing in that building just to understand they had listed out what their short term needs are. Obviously, the the future needs, I think we all know, are tied up with where we go with the school slash community center discussion and where that all lands. But I think short term is we'd have to find them a home. I don't think anyone wants to go take that $35,000 savings and pour it into an office park on Route Nine for a few offices, right? So it's, you know, there would be some work that has to be done there. And then the playground, as everyone remembers, was scoped out of the actual plan. And there would be naturally some expense either moving or repurposing that. The part of the argument, obviously, there is going to be some of the pieces could easily be reused, some are going to be tougher. Which parcel would we put them on? I think there's been an emphasis on the south side, but to avoid fin giving the school. So those are other things that obviously would have to be resolved. But I don't know that anyone wants to pour a ton of effort into a lot of that before we know whether it's going to town meeting and then obviously whether town meeting, you know, approves of it. And then I think the only other thing that that kind of struck me is that, you know, I candidly agree with almost every single comment that that came before me on the board. I think you're all thinking about it the right way. I think it's it's not an easy decision. I don't think there's a slam dunk either way, which I think makes this more difficult. But I would say more importantly is the scoring. It was all or not. We didn't have a choice based on the way that the RFP that you released was drafted. So right, wrong, or indifferent, we either had to give zero points for the facade or 15. So as one of the scores, I guess my intent was eight. I don't think it was 15. It was larger than that. But the the intent was to say that they were trying to honor that request. I do hear there are, you know, certain arguments to how that could be interpreted, but there certainly is an intent there, at least was was my view.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any anybody on our board with follow up or comments or questions about that? And is my, again, I'm not sure if we're going to resolve it tonight, or maybe we are. I mean, is there an inclination? Do we want to? We're only what is what is today? The the 10th. We're 12 days away from town meeting. So I mean, we could wait till next Tuesday when we meet again to make a final determination about whether or not we're going to charge full ahead to town meeting. But if we're not going to, if we know if we know that come hell or high water, there's no way that that, you know, nowhere nobody other than zero to two is going to support bringing it to town meeting. If we know that tonight, then maybe we know that tonight. Are folks are folks inclined to try to make that decision tonight? Do you want more information and put it over till the 18th? I am agnostic about this.
Marty, can I add one more thing that might add a little bit more to Jason's math, which I think is important?
Sure.
So I think the what a couple of people said as far as adding kids to school system is a little bit of a red herring. The school system cost is a fixed cost. Unless you add a lot of kids, you don't change the cost by adding, say, 10 kids for, you know, five times two, which would I think be the most, and it's probably too much. Mass and Place only added 17 kids in total, so I doubt if we'd get 10 out of five units. But even if we did, it's not going to change the cost of school. It's Park Place that would change or Park Central would change it, things like that that are big. So I don't think it changes it if we sold. Those were sold for $600,000 each. That's $50,000 of real estate taxes on top of the 40 Jason just mentioned. So that's a $90,000 swing a year in our finances, and that's not a little money. So I I wish that we at least go to town meeting, let town decide what to to do with it, at least show it to them. They may say no. They may insist on a preservation restriction. I don't know. But I think that it's worth at least doing. I actually think $700,000 is actually a pretty good bid.
And when I I I should have amended or or I'm agnostic about whether or not to decide it tonight. I think hopefully it was pretty clear what I said earlier. If if I were voting tonight, or if I were voting next week, I would vote to take it to town meeting for some of the same reasons Kathy did. I I I I think there is angst on both sides of 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 the decision. And when it's not such a clear cut decision, I'm more inclined to let the taxpayers decide than for us to take a vote, not to let them decide. But I understand that other folks may feel differently.
So Marty, if I may?
Yep.
So so based on that and and knowing how town meeting could be, I I agree ultimately it it's town meeting's decision. So I know I had said that I would say no, and certainly my no vote can be voted on at town meeting and it'll count as one vote. But I I'm certainly willing to change my opinion, at least to let town meeting have a discussion on this and a town meeting to decide.
Ms. Malinowski?
So process wise, and Mark, maybe you can answer this. Does a PNS come before or after we bring it to town meeting?
I'm not going to be so bold as to answer your question. I would probably suggest that you would have Aldo come back in the room as to because this is a different tact, obviously, that we took with Fayetteville. So I'm not sure which is the chicken and which is the egg in this instance. Chelsea?
You don't have time to do a PNS before town meeting.
Yeah, I'm guessing you could do it either way, but I could be wrong. I mean, I think that.
I mean, I'm I'm not opposed to bringing it to town meeting, although I do think that we need to vet what Brian brought up.
Oh, I I don't. I I think there's a there's a ton of vetting and 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 but anyway, there's a ton of vetting. I'll leave it at that. anyway, there's a ton of vetting. I'll leave it at that. Mr. Shea.
I would be in, if there was a vote tonight, I would be in favor of bringing this to town meeting. Again, assuming a positive outcome from that vetting process, and that didn't raise issues. You know, quite honestly, I think, again, having been through the Fayetteville process, we got one bid initially. We said, oh, this is crazy. There's, there's got to be more interest out there. We rebid it. We got one bid again, and I was a, you know, a different person. It's a seller's market now. I think the market has spoken on what the value is on this. And I think, you know, having gone through the process, I think we ought to see it through and let the voters at town meeting decide on what on what they want to do.
Mr. Stivers.
So what we would take to town meeting is this specific deal? Or the or the concept of selling it?
I mean, it would be the 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 article.
The 700,000 offer?
Yeah, to be the article that's in the, it's that's in the town warrant with the with the figure plugged in.
Yeah, I'm on the fence, but I guess the the consensus seems to be to take it there. I do think it's ultimately the voters' call. I just think we might be able to do better if we took another cut at it, but I'm not against seeing what town meeting says to it.
All right, I think since there's already a warrant article with this, I don't think we have to vote to to put it on the town meeting warrant or to to consider. But I think the consensus is, Jason, answering your question, that I suspect we're going to have to address this again in terms of some substance about it at our meeting on the eighteenth. It'll be an agenda item, but the plan is right now, assuming it can be done, assuming that and we'll we'll touch base with town council to make sure that that the fact that I think Miss Cook is right, there's no way we're going to get a P N S done between now and May twenty-second. I don't think that prevents town meeting from acting. It would be contingent upon, you know, an acceptable P N S, but maybe I'm wrong about that. But I don't think, Mark, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have to do anything to keep this moving towards a consideration at town meeting on the twenty-second. Am I right about that?
No, I don't think that we need to. Obviously, I've got a placeholder motion, and we would probably just need to reconfigure that so that it more specifies the, you know, the actual proposal.
Yep.
Marty, can I ask a process question?
Yep.
So moving this forward to town meeting now, obviously, there's going to have to be some form of presentation. Someone's going to speak to this. I think that Capital has discussed some of the the placement of the 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 departments that are currently there. How how are you or the board, how are we thinking about potentially presenting this? Do we want Capital's input as well on on how we do this? I think there's going to be a lot of questions that I think we might be able to get ahead of as we're doing something.
Jason, you and I have not spoken about this, but I would expect that Capital would be heavily involved in both a presentation and in a and in a Q and A. I mean, I the our board would as well, but but we've taken a a sort of straw consensus vote to that that we're not going to forestall, we're not going to move to indefinitely continue or something else for town meeting. This is going to be an article that is going to be, unless something changes between now and the twenty-second on town meeting for consideration. I don't know what our vote, I don't know if the board selectmen is going to vote to support it. And I mean, it's entirely possible that we don't. And I and you all haven't had a meeting yet, you know, you don't know what your board is going to do. So I guess we have to figure that out, but but the more general question is, is assuming you all are in. I mean, if 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 it ultimately goes to town meeting, but nobody's in support of it. I mean, the town could still decide to go in that direction. That'd be interesting. We don't think you should, they don't think you should, they don't think you should, but but let's get that affirmative vote going. But I would expect that that that, given some of the considerations you've outlined, that there's at least a reasonable possibility that Capital would be in favor of this. There's also a possibility our board would be and would be both presumably involved in in a presentation to the town about about what the pros and cons are, what our recommendations are and and, you know, the path forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is we're not very far away from town meeting, so there's a real short window to do to do anything with this.
Who wasn't who decided to get bids in a day?
So so I I think, Mark, obviously, Capital can discuss this, but I would, given the 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 mention of the timing right in the clock, I don't know what the appetite is of your board to designate a member to at least reach out to the party that submitted the loan bid, because I think you've heard some comments here to understand like what are going to be the sticking points in the P N S, right? Like, forget whether you can get it done or not, like, there is, right, the bid package is is broad, right? I think we can, right, like, it goes into some specifics, but it's not a legally binding document. So I think what's important is that board of selectmen at least has a majority vote of support behind the actual article, your your motion. I I I fully appreciate your desire to to let town meeting decide, but I think you need to be able to put together a package. It certainly has the pros and the cons to it. But you also need to be able to articulate why it's worth moving forward with, but also know that you're going to be able to actually execute a P N S in at least in a broad framework that somewhat aligns with either commentary here between now and town meeting or any discussion that occurs in town meeting for, because I assume this art, this motion could be amended on the fly, which obviously we all have to act accordingly. It's just something to think about. I don't know what the right process is there again. Again, we took a different tact. Clearly, financially, it it looks more promising, but there's obviously some gating issues and cons to think about, too, when you're only comparing one against one.
Hi, Jason, I just believe that you said we 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 are, it's just, I'm certainly not prepared to take a vote on the on the merits of the proposal. I just.
Oh, I I'm with I I I'm with you, Marty, because I don't know how I'd vote if I was asked to vote tonight, too, to be completely honest. I'm just saying, there's there's certain things that you as the executives of the town can do between now and then to meet one of you, at least this is my recommendation, I happen to be overruled. Meet with the parties, assuming Brian's valid issue is resolved, just to understand what they're going to be looking for in a P N S. Because what if you learn as part of that process that you're not going to be able to come to terms that you know you could present with a straight face to town meeting that would be worth worth our while?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we we've put ourselves in this position by the timing of the 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 RFP. You know, how much of what needs to be done can be done, boy, again, it's 12 days. It just seems kind of crazy to go to have gone through the entire process to get this RFP done. You know, in a weird way, it should be easier. We only have one response. We don't have to vet multiple responses to decide which one is the is the favored one potentially to to submit to town meeting. That being said, it is only 12 days.
This is kind of dangerous to approach it this way, so what you might want to do instead is plan on doing this at the fall town meeting, and that way you've got time to negotiate a P N S that you actually bring. Because the danger is the town approves this bid, but the due diligence period then kicks in, you get the P N S, and things change quite a bit, and that's not what's been approved, so where are you?
Mark, is there any reason we can't, is there any reason why we can't do that? In other words, keep it on track for town meeting, but not for this town meeting?
I think that'd be something that we could investigate. Obviously, we'd have to get counsel involved and and see if, you know, if both sides were amenable. The one point I wanted to make was it's a little bit curious, because this is obviously much different than Fayetteville. With Fayetteville, the selectmen were seeking the approval to dispose of the property. And it was kind of just, you know, a blanket provision to allow you to do that. But it is the board's discretion to do this. As I think Jason had pointed out, if the board, if there isn't a majority of the board that wants to do it, but you want to bring it to town meeting to see what they say, and town meeting says, yes, there's still a majority of you that didn't want to do it. And I don't know whether town meeting changes that vote or not.
Okay.
There's too many layers.
All right, well, I don't, there's a lot of layers. But I think the, I think Kathy's point is a good one. If 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 in fact, and I can't imagine why it would expire, but but whether or not the inclination to keep it on track for town meeting can simply be that, yeah, but not for this town meeting, particularly with the recognition that we have, you know, all but scheduled one for October. We certainly have made it pretty clear that that there's going to be a town meeting, a special town meeting in the fall, so.
Is is there any, is there any way to use town meeting as a forum for the discussion to set the criteria and bring it forward in that in that light to people to say, well, we're looking for as a criteria for forming the purchase and sale and the restrictions that we like and vote on those instead of the actual?
I don't think so. I mean, I think, yeah, I think you could have done that, but we didn't do that.
Isn't, so so suggestions made by town meeting, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, they they wouldn't be binding to the board. I think, isn't that what happened initially with Fayetteville? That they the the town meeting was very vocal in wanting to have the restriction on, but it wasn't binding to the board? Am I remembering that incorrectly, Mark?
I I think you're remembering it correctly. The board agreed to do the things that town meeting was asking them to do. I don't believe it was part of the, it was part of a binding vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's, I I can't imagine that they they I'm trying to imagine what language could get, could pass legal muster for that sort of binding going forward. It's kind of like that 95% vote. But anyway.
Marty?
Yes, Sam, I'm about to leave this and get on to other business. I think we we beat this horse pretty well.
Is is this bid going to expire at some point? I don't remember. So if we delay till October, do we actually lose the opportunity?
That was part of the question about whether or not it could be put on to the, we'll have to find that out.
So they could, they can extend it?
They could, but they don't have.
The parties can agree to extend anything, sure. But we'll we'll, that's that's some information we're going to get. I mean, it just, again, the 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 time pressure of 12 days feels very, very real. So buying time is not a, is not unreasonable out here, okay? All right, guys, we got to move on to other stuff. This has been very helpful on a lot of different fronts, and I I thank advisory and Capital for your time. Anything else before we kick you guys out?
Yes, the most important thing is was to say goodbye officially to Mr. Shea and thank him for all the things he's done, which so many is hard to recall, and I think I got most of them. But Brian, it's been a pleasure. I hope you enjoy your time off, and I hope you come back. As I told you, advisory has an opening.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I make a motion for advisory to adjourn second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote very quick. Cook is aye, Tim Martel.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Who else is here? AP?
Aye.
AD? Okay, I think that's everybody that's here. I hope it is. Anyway, it's enough votes, okay? Good night, everybody.
And I'll move the Capital Planning adjourns.
Second, good night, advisory.
Seconded by Andrew, roll call, Brascio.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
And Malinowski's aye. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, Capital Planning.
Does that mean I get to leave now, too?
I was going to say, can we leave? All right, so that takes care of Roman numeral three, Roman numeral four, Chairman's Report. Kathy Cook stole a lot of my thunder, and my Chairman's Report is, you know, Brian Shea and I have have fought many battles together over the years in various committees. I've also had the the opportunity to to, when I'm not on committees, watch him, whether it's on advisory, Main Street. Obviously, predated me by a number of years on the the Board of of Selectment. And, you know, one of the things we've said to volunteers in our interviews over the course of the last, at least the several years I've been on the board, is that South Row is incredibly lucky with the people who choose to come forward and and volunteer. And that is true in spades with Mr. Shea, who's given, you know, an incredible amount of time and effort to the to the town in so many different ways. And my email to you, Brian, said the the town is going to miss you, the board is going to miss you, and and most importantly, from my perspective, I'm really going to miss you. And I, you know, the town could not have asked for for a better service from a volunteer and from an elected official, so Godspeed. Anybody else want to add?
Thank you.
Lisa?
Sure. So so again, Brian, thank you. Thank you for everything. It has been a a pleasure to serve all of the time I've been on the board with you. I've learned a lot from you, and I can be pigheaded, and that's not always an easy thing to do. So I I have learned a lot from you on how to treat people, the respect that people are due, and to always listen to people. And the thing I will leave you most with is I'm I'm not happy that I am now the senior member. I don't view myself as senior in any way, so but best of luck, Brian, and you surely have left a hole on the board, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much. Chelsea?
So it's been a pleasure to serve with you for one year, almost. And I'm happy I won't be the rookie anymore, so that's one good thing for me. But thank you for all your time and effort and time away from your family. I know that it's hard when you have kids that you're trying to get to, so it's been a sacrifice for you. And I'll definitely miss your demeanor and your calming effect, so thanks for all your service.
Thank you. And Sam?
Echo my colleagues' comments of appreciation for a great service to the town. And Brian, I won't say goodbye, I'll say until we see you again.
Very good. If I could just take a a minute, I particularly want to thank. Brian, before you do, I just want to see if Mr. Purple wants to give him an opportunity. He always gives me a hard time when I jump over the town administrator, so I'll let him weigh in here before his report.
I was going to leave it under my report, but that's okay. No, I I, you know, I just wanted to echo the comments, you know, that that the board has made. I think that, you know, each of you bring something different to the board. And and Brian, you know, I I think Chelsea had just said it, you know, brings a real calming, you know, presence to the board, you know, obviously very much a bridge builder, trying to find a way to get to S on a lot of issues. Brian's chaired the board through a lot of difficult issues, and I think he's helped, you know, navigate it, you know, quite effectively. I am going to miss him most because he seems to remember everything that this board has done. He remembers the minutia of minutes, he remembers dates, and he is the first person I call when I can't remember exactly the the detail of the history of something, and he's always, you know, provided me good counsel and good guidance on that. So I still may use you to to help to help provide me some historical information and that. But wanted to thank you for your for your for your wisdom and your support over the years.
Thank you all, and you still have the bat phone number. Don't hesitate to call it, so I'll I'll pick it up. And and I just wanted to thank you, Mark and Vanessa, for all the help that you've offered over the years. All the department heads have been tremendous, all the board and committees that we've interacted with have been great. You know, I think the town is well-served by all. Very, very pleased, happy to have served with the the nine other citizens from the town who've been on the board at the same time as me, every one of them dedicated to doing what's best for the town as a whole. It's something, I'll miss it, and no regrets and happy I did it. Thank you.
All right, that is it for the Chairman's Report. Any members' reports? Looks like no. And Mark, anything besides what you just went through?
Nope, nothing else.
No, we're all set. Onto Roman numeral five, consent agenda. I move that we approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda.
Second.
Are there any holds? No. All right, no discussion. Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. All right, other matters. Let's see, we have gone through B already, the South Union School. Mark, you've done some work on C. I think that'll be relatively quick. And then I actually think that the discussion of the the bits and middles for the legal services will be pretty quick. And so let's start off with A, which is the the follow-on of the discussion we had last week, which I actually heard from a number of different people on, I don't want to say both sides of the issue, but a range of different views about what was discussed last week. And I I think everyone appreciated the discussion. I know I certainly did. week. And I think everyone appreciated the discussion. I know I certainly did. I did some additional research about some of the stuff that was raised. And I'll just share a little bit of that. I don't want to get into a whole lot of detail. But I look back at the EEOC decision that's been mentioned by a couple of different people. And it's interesting that, that decision, as well as every other decision that I could find, and there are a lot of, not a lot of them, that talked about this flag, the don't tread on me flag, as well as other flags. The focus is always whether, is always the context of the flag, not the, the, the substance, the being of the flag itself. And that was part of the discussion last week, and I think that's really important. None of the decisions that exist out there have found any of the flags that are, that are currently in the old burial ground to be themselves problematic. What the decisions say is that, is that, as with a lot of things, there are ways that you can use, present, or otherwise misuse a, something like a flag in a way that creates potential issues on a number of different fronts. We heard last week, and I don't think there's any dispute about this, the fact that that's, that, that's not the case with the flags that are on the old burial ground, that they were put there some decades ago. Their, their only purpose there has been to honor, not to misuse, not to mischaracterize, not to misappropriate, you know, in a, in a way, I think I, the word I used last week was antithetical to really what the flags themselves were intended to, to stand for. The other part of the discussion that I thought was, was incredibly important was not allowing South Row to be seen in a bad light. And as a result, I think it's important. So I guess two things. Number one, I don't think we should take a vote, I don't think we need to take a vote on what to do, on how to do something with the flags. My recommendation is that the flags are there. They, 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 we've, we've given the authorization to the veterans over the years to present those flags there. There can be discussions going forward about whether or not that's the right location, particularly in the context of the historical walk that we've been talking about. But my recommendation is not to take a vote to, to remove those flags. I don't think there's a basis for it. I don't think anyone showed a basis for it. What was shown was a basis for being very concerned that South Row does not present those flags or really anything else in, in inappropriate way. I don't think that's being done, but I think we can go an extra step, an extra mile. And with the assistance of the Historical Commission, with the assistance of the veterans, with the assistance of, of some of the folks who went to an awful lot of work to weigh in on this issue, to make sure that whether it's in the form of a plaque, literature, variety of things, make sure to anyone who, who might think that South Row is intending to present those flags in the wrong way, that, that's not the case. That, that misappropriation of, of important American history is not something that South Row is going to allow. And that we provide context to make it clear that that's not being allowed here. And that's not the intent of the, the presentation of those flags. It's honoring history. It's honoring people from South Row, both past and present, and presumably future, who have, you know, served in the military and quite frankly, who just, you know, support the history and, and what the United States is all about. So that's my recommendation, that we not entertain a motion to remove the flags, that, but that we, we can do it by a vote or a consensus, that making sure that, that, that the presentation of those flags and any other historical ornamentation by the Town of South Row, that we make sure that there's not any issues with, with allowing even the suggestion of misappropriation or misuse, again, by, by, by those who would, would take American history and, and, and approach it in a way that's antithetical to really what American history should be about. So that's my recommendation, but I'm one vote and I'm happy to hear what other folks have to say. Ms. Brascio?
All right, thank you. So I, I also went and did some additional, looked at some additional history. And I guess a couple of the things that stuck out with me the most was that the foundation of our country has been built on with everybody having the ability to stand up and, and be heard. And I think that that's happening with this flag as well. We're seeing it on a national level with the American flag. I think we're seeing a lot of sports teams and whatnot are choosing to not stand for the flag, for the presenting of the flag. You know, they're taking the opportunity to have a kneel. And again, that's their right. And, you know, that's what I view this flag and all of the historic flags from the Revolution were about. It was about finding a place of, of freedom and a, and a place of unity. And I think that is allowed. And I think, you know, having the discussions that we're having now is allowing people that may not, may not agree with what the flag or some groups have may represented the flag today. You, 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 it, it, it doesn't change history. History is history, the good, the bad, the ugly. And I, I agree, I don't think the intent of this flag was that. I think that this was a good discussion to have. I think education is the key. I was thinking along the same lines as you, Marty, of taking the opportunity to, with the historic walk, be able to present, and, and again, I also hate to use two sides, but having the pros and cons of this flag, and some feel very strongly about this flag, and giving them the opportunity through what, whether it be, you know, literature or something we allow to have there, and, and have our veterans as well feel the same way. I don't view this as a split down the middle. I think education is key, that, you know, these flags were flown during time when our, when our countries were at war, where they were fighting for our rights and rights that exist today. So I, I also agree, and I think we could take it even a step further. I, I, I think that, you know, some additional history on, on the burial ground itself through the historic walk. So I actually, at this time, I support your recommendation as well, Marty. But I think we can all continue to educate each other. And I think it, it's a conversation that can be, that continues to be ongoing. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Lisa. Ms. Malinowski?
So I actually learned a lot last week from all the speakers. So I just want to thank them for all stepping forward because I think a lot of good information was shared. And I, I think it was good for everyone to, to hear kind of every perspective. I think the one takeaway for me that I kept going back to was the intent of the flag and its original meaning. And also something that Ms. Deans Row said about her generation having a different view of the flag. And, and I think the suggestion to tie in the education around what the flag's original intent was, what it's currently used for, and then how it's been misrepresented is really important. So I, I agree with your comments, Marty, that we, we use it as kind of a, a tool to tie everyone together and, you know, make South Row a community-based and, and not any negative connotations for it.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. Mr. Shea?
So one of, as I was thinking about this and, and all the good points that everybody did bring up at our meeting last week, that, what I kind of likened this to, is I think we've all seen politicians, political parties use a popular song and try to tie the theme of their campaign, the team, theme of their campaign message to a particular song. And in some instances, the, there's agreement between the politicians and the artists to do it. We've all seen Bill Clinton on stage with Fleetwood Mac singing, you know, "Don't Stop Thinking About Tomorrow." And we've seen where Donald Trump tried to use a Tom Petty song. And, you know, while Tom is not no longer with us, those on his behalf reached out and said, no, you can't do it. Well, there isn't anybody, you know, Mr. Gadsden isn't around to stand up for himself anymore. And he doesn't have a legal team working for him and he doesn't have a family. So I think it almost, it falls upon us as a society to stand up for him and the original meaning of that flag. And I thought that the concept of, you know, all the, the information that was shown in the, in the slide that Mr. Kalenda showed with the flags and the meanings behind them, if some sort of, I mean, it would be a great use of CPC funds to create some sort of a plaque that has that information on it, that, that information can be shared. And I was also, you know, in a way, taken by the comment that Ms. Deans Row had about people of her age group only knowing that Gadsden flag and associating with hate. I remember too, the comment that Mr. Why Not had, where he, you know, in all likelihood, a lot of the groups that are trying to take over that flag are doing so, and they're ignorant of that flag's true meaning. So when I was on my college tour with my daughter a few weeks ago, James Madison University was one of the schools we went to, and on a tunnel that goes under a roadway to one of the new buildings, painted on the walls of the tunnel, is one of the quotes from James Madison, that knowledge will forever govern ignorance. And I think we need to provide the knowledge and the education of what, you know, the true meaning of those historic symbols are, and, and not allow those symbols to be, you know, ceded to the hate groups and the radical groups. So I would be in favor of keeping them there. But I think it's important to, you know, teach the historical significance of all those flags as well.
And Mr. Stivers?
Thanks. Again, I also am in general agreement with what you're suggesting, Marty. And I also have appreciated the chance to learn a lot about some of the historical perspective on all of these issues. And particularly that the history of the burial ground, the real historic asset for the town, which certainly should be included in our historic education process. Maybe we should push to get it on the National Historic Register, as a matter of fact. I also appreciate the input that we've gotten from some of our younger citizens in that understand that times change, symbols change, and public sensitivities and expectations change. And I would hope that the next conversations that you're suggesting, which I think makes a lot of sense, focused on trying to balance some of those things in a way that, again, clarify that, you know, we don't certainly want to create the impression that in any way we're supportive of some of the misuse, I think, of some of these flags here. One of the concerns that I still have is that I'm, I'm not comfortable with flags being placed on grave locations. So I hope the next conversations that happen, consider maybe moving some of the flags as they're currently positioned there to avoid that. And so again, seems to me that challenges to balance a number of competing interests here. And I think there's a way to do that through ongoing conversations. So I'm supportive of what you're suggesting.
And now I'll be specific about what I'm suggesting. And, and with the, in the, in the dwindling number of days that, that I'm going to be chair, that, that, with the, the approval, I don't think I need the authorization, but with, with the sanction, I guess, of the rest of the members of Board, I, I mean, I was affected by a lot of what folks said last week, from Ms. Deans Row to Ms. Waters' sort of remarkable history lesson. And I think there's, the interesting thing is, I think there's a lot that can be done even to improve, not just from a literature standpoint or a contextual standpoint, but I think Ms. Waters had some terrific suggestions for even, you know, enhanced ways we can honor some of the folks who are, who are, you know, interned in the old burial ground. And so what I, what I would like your, your approval to do is to reach out to folks who have expressed an interest and see if they're willing to be part of an ongoing conversation to get this right, and as right as we can. And I, I'm seeing not, no disagreement. So I'm going to assume that's agreement. And I'll reach out to Ms. Deans Row, Mr. Kalenda, Ms. Why Not, Mr. Why Not, Ms. Waters, to the Historical Commission. And, and let's figure out a way to get this right. But again, I don't think we need to take a vote. I'm, I'm not inclined. It doesn't seem like anybody else is inclined to make a motion to have any of those flags removed. We also want to get the location, the placement right to make sure that, that they're not in the wrong place. So with that, are we ready to move on?
Can I just add one thing, Marty?
Sure, Lisa.
While you're having those conversations, and I may have misread this, that Mr. Wei Shan had actually done a book on Lost South Row. And unless I'm misreading what he had put in the book, I believe that some of the Nittmonk Indians, that was a Nittmonk burial ground. If, if that is the case, I would like to make sure that that gets included in the education that, that we do there as well. So maybe you could follow up and see if, it's something I'm misreading. Again, it was, it was within the book that was done, so.
No, no, good point. Again, the idea, the, the idea is to get this as right as can be gotten right.
Yep. All right, thank you.
All right, town meeting prep. Mark, you have given us a roster of proposed items, is that correct?
Yes. So knowing, knowing how you want to move on this issue rather quickly, I have put in the, the, the one-page Excel sheet, I have gone through and tried to assign motions for the Board members and, and do it in some kind of repetitive motion, while at the same time acknowledging the fact that there are some, that some members had mentioned that they would be interested in, in doing. All of this against the backdrop of the fact that Mr. Semino, and I see Mr. Semino is in the audience, but the moderator has not yet finalized his consent agenda. So while we may be assigning motions for people, it may be that they could end up on the consent list and therefore would render your motion requirements moot on some of those.
Do you mind if I get up for just one second, Marty? Mr. Kalenda has his hand up from, I think, our prior discussion. I don't know if you want to entertain that, but I thought I'd let you know.
Dan, it's going to be, I, I will bring you over, but very, very quickly. I do not want to have a substantive discussion beyond what the Board has already discussed. And I will cut you off.
Marty, can you hear me?
I can. Did you hear me?
Yes, I can. And, and so let's, you and I have a discussion tomorrow. So I understand exactly what the, I heard a lot tonight. I'm not exactly confident in what I heard. And I'm concerned about getting it right. That, that creates an impression that something is, is wrong. So I thought I had, you know, I thought I heard the Board supportive of the flags there and what, and how the veterans have presented them for decades. But if I'm mistaken on that, you know, please, let's have a conversation tomorrow and, and I won't take up any more of the Board's time.
I'm happy to talk to you, Dan, and you're not wrong.
Thank you, Marty.
All right. Okay.
Sorry, Marty.
So the Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah. So basically, so I, I've, I've listed, I guess the quickest way to do this with the chairman is, you know, the Board had this in the packet. I don't know if there's any disagreements or anything with any of the assignments that I randomly, or that I applied for each member for the, for the motion, for the articles. Again, it would be reading the motions, you know, as provided in the packet for the, for the articles that are assigned, you know, to each member that were the selection of the sponsors. And I don't know whether there's any comments.
I'm fine with the, the, the one thing I want to do is I need to drill down to make sure that there aren't any bonding issues that I'm signed up for. I don't think there are, but I need to, I, I just want to make sure that there's no, you know, secondary implications for them.
Actually, there is. So I can, because, it's funny you say that. I didn't even note that, is that you're listed for the capital budget leasing borrowing article. So.
Oh, and that's the one that had both, it had both leasing and, okay, okay.
I can shift, I can shift you out of there.
Okay. And we've got till next, you know, and next Tuesday, we can finalize it, Mark. But I, I thought your approach was, was perfectly reasonable.
Okay.
All right, are we done with that item?
I'm.
You are? Okay. Next is bits and middles for the legal services RFP. I think this is pretty straightforward as well. You know, I've been through, you know, a million, you know, sort of reviews of the equivalent of legal services RFPs. I mean, it just strikes me that, 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 that the, well, the four of us and soon to be a fifth, take a look at them. We've got a relatively short timeframe, but we do have till the end of July. I don't think we want to burden ourselves before town meeting, which is the 18th. But on the 18th, I guess two things. Number one, see if there's anything. And Mark, have you done a preliminary view to see if people complied with the RFP from purely a?
No, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't opened them yet. I wanted to wait until the Board kind of weighed in as to what process you want to, you want to do to, to evaluate them.
You know what, Mr. Stivers, how about if you and Mr. Purple take a review? Again, the first review, you should just make sure the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and they meet the minimum they meet the minimum standards required from the RFP. If they do, then, then it stress strikes me, the board is, should take the, the time. And again, it's not going to happen on the 18th. It'll happen sometime, I guess maybe at our first meeting in June. And there's only five replies. My, my recommendation is to, unless someone is disqualified as a result of you reviewing the RFP, to bring in the five applicants and, and, you know, have public discussions with them. Period.
Happy to work with Mark on that. I think that's a good approach.
Chelsea and Lisa, does that make sense? I mean, I think, you know, a half hour, it's a meeting, we might have to have a special meeting, but it's a meeting, you know, designated. But it, it shouldn't be more than a half hour, 40 minutes for discussion with, with each. I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of a standard timeframe for, for, you know, the interviewing process that I go through all the time when I'm considering, you know, hiring an expert or hiring an attorney or otherwise. I think it's, you know, I think it can be done in one meeting. And as I said, we've got, if, if, if it turns out to be four, if someone's disqualified because of the way they responded to the, to the RFP, then they're disqualified. You know, we already had a couple of disqualifications. So.
That's exactly what the school committee did with their council selection recently, as a matter of fact. So it worked fine.
Yeah. All right. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay. So Sam, you and Mark will back, be back to the, the board. That will be fully constituted as of sometime tomorrow evening. And let us know if it's five or some number less than five that for us to review, we'll dive into a full review of them. And either a special meeting or as part of a meeting after, our first meeting after town meeting, we'll, we'll have interviews with the, who's ever identified as the lead counsel for the respective legal outfits. Make sense?
Good.
Okay. All right. We are done with Roman numeral six. We are on Roman numeral seven, which is public comment. Going once, going twice. I'm looking and I see Ms. Waters out there. I'm not asking you for public comment, Ms. Waters. I just want to thank you. Your, 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 the discussion, your presentation last week was terrific, and I learned a lot. And I'm always happy when I can say that. So thank you for that. And with that, I'm sorry, Sam?
Ditto, I said.
Okay. Oh, the, the one thing I want to say though is, Brian, you said that as we've all seen with Bill Clinton, I think there's an awful lot of people who, who have, who don't remember Bill Clinton being on the stage with Fleetwood Mac. Any of my kids would go, "Who?" No Fleetwood Mac, though.
Well, as the senior member of the board, I guess I'm dating myself with that comment.
Fair enough. All right. With that, I move that the board enter into executive session for Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation for the below-listed items, exemption three. As I, as Chair, declare that an open meeting may have a different effect on the litigating position of the public body. Those two items are Huang et al., v. Southboro Zoni, Board of Appeals, et al., Louise Baron et al., v. Southboro Board of Selectmen, et al., with the intention, and Mr. Davis is in the audience now, that I will bring Mr. Davis, I'll reverse the order for discussion, and Mr. Davis will be brought into executive session first. So that's my motion.
Second.
My, Mr. Shea. Roll call. Vote, Ms. Brascio?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Shea?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. We are adjourned from, actually adjourned's not the right word. Maybe it is the right word. We're no longer in open session. We're going to executive session, not to return, and we'll adjourn after that.
So Marty, I think that we have to bring in both councils at the same time. Vanessa, is, is, or is there a way to do it one at a time?
Um.
Are we still, are we still?
What? Hang on. We need to stop recording first, just a minute.
Okay. Sorry. It's important.